We can answer the question about affordable housing, it's kind of sad. But at the same time. You know, what the builders are saying, you know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Don't tell.
Tell. Co-host all summer.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone.
All right, one second, you're somehow coming out of my.
Okay, it is seven o'clock and I'm calling this meeting to order. We have a forum. And we'll take a call.
Molly Entervine?
Yes, I, here.
Lisa Coptabiano?
She is absent this evening.
Dan Gritzke?
Here.
Josh Peck?
Here.
Shannon Stross?
Here.
All right, um, do we agree to the agenda as written?
Yes.
I know Lisa had, um, mentioned potentially adding, um, that item that we did not get with the that on the zoning updates, um, for more full zoning, I, I don't know if we want to add that, what do we want to make? Um, since our meetings have been running. It's up to you guys.
We could add it and then if we are not able to get to it, we could table it going next. But if the. Maybe staff can have a better idea of. Uh, what our updates look like for leaving. Um. Think, I think the board could just kind of see how far we've been in.
Okay.
What kind of set a time limit, Lincoln, we, we usually end up spending about an hour and a half discussing comprehensive plan. Right? Let's say clerk.
Yeah, without.
Yeah, depends on, uh, planning commission's interest. So you're meeting.
Okay, um. Well, before adding it, then we need to amend the agenda.
I will make a motion to add the discussion of commercial zoning. Uh, to section six as, uh, to be six B, uh, should we have the time to discuss?
Okay, join a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye. Ready?
Yes.
Um, and then, so was that? Did I motion it to just add the I O or did I motion to approve with the addition?
Depends on the language in the motion. Did you include a approval of the agenda with an amendment or did you just amend the agenda?
I've got total short-term memory loss.
Me too, that's.
It was so immediate.
Add it to the agenda.
But technically by rawest rules, you, you'll have to just approve amended agenda.
I'll go ahead and make your motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you, sorry, all right, all in favor?
Uh.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, I wanted to make sure I had it.
Our audio is gonna come out of our, um, episode and I have no idea how to switch it over. So that's why I've been kind of distracted, this is only one in three years.
You want me to see if I can.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna jump right into. Maybe discussion of relevant actions, yeah.
Okay.
I just gotta play around with it before Lincoln comes on.
Okay, um, so, uh, we have review, review and approval of the October seventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. If everybody had a chance to pick them over. I have a question about, I have a three or four on relevant actions by the town council. Um, did you mention and no, I don't think you did. Um, talking to town council about these things that were written up here.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
She hasn't asked me to do it now.
She?
But in other words, I'm going down the agenda.
Okay, I was talking about the minutes.
Oh, oh. Oh, sorry.
Just talking about the, um. Like Shannon had asked about the joint work session. Um. I kind of talked about, um, being talked to by town house members outside of the meetings. And I just didn't know, I didn't remember whether you had said anything to town council.
That would be here, that would be there, like in other words, I would report on it, I wouldn't report on it for the minutes from last week, I would report it on here. For the agenda.
Yeah, because he would have gone to council the following week.
Right.
And then, uh, give it a part time for it.
This was pre going to the town council, so, so in other words. We have this, now I'll report tonight what the council said back.
That'd be great.
Was that, was that the question wrong or maybe I misunderstood?
Uh, no, I'm just, I was at the town council meeting and I didn't. Think that he had said anything during his portion of the, so I was curious about whether. He was gonna talk to them in session or do, do you talk to them outside of session?
Well, so right now we're, um, trying to approve the meeting minutes and then I think that'll be on the agenda for.
Should be their next thing.
Yeah, for the, um, report on all the actions. But are the meeting minutes good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to the, uh, through the minutes for October seventh.
Join a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I. A, yes.
A.
Okay, and then report on relevant actions by the town council.
So taking the message back to the council about applying for mission. Continuing our work, those, it also prompted another conversation with the council about the proper. Procedures that we should do. In general, it was kind of. Helping the town councillors to understand that we have our role as the planning commission. We need to finish the process here as quick as we can, but it needs to be finished here and then it would go back. To the town council and in reality, the. Conversation from the town attorney. And also from, and you can correct me if I say this incorrectly, it's basically. We do our process at the planning commission and once we fin- finish our process of planning commission, it goes to the town council. And the council was wanting to have. Kind of part of it, you know, we had the conversation about giving them part and, and Mr. Boling's kind of, it's, it's not, Mr. Boling, our town attorney, when explaining it's not. Something we need to do, like it, it, when it goes to the council as something completed. Once we go through the process that we do, once we have a public hearing, it goes to the council and once it goes to the council. Council can have that and do whatever they want, you know, whatever we want to do as a council, but it would be. It would be premature to, to get things to them as fast as they want, they, there's definitely. Different councillors that expressed frustration with not getting here quicker, at the same time, we've been, as a, as a plan, we should do it the best we can to move it through. And so, going back to the, the process of, of us even dialoguing. In other words, the, the process of coming from here is we have to complete this work, go to a public hearing and then it goes to the town council. Does any of that wrong?
Yeah, that's good, we should, I shared the weaving, hoping it was kind of a high level, uh, um. Almost a succinct summary like we talked last meeting, um, so, um. I think I even already got input on it, which I've, uh, received, but I haven't passed along to planning commission, uh, already, but, uh. I guess another thing, what Dan said is like. They have, they have their ability to work on the comprehensive plan and the time spent. Planning commission building a comprehensive plan to recommend town council doesn't impede that ability, you know.
I have a question, did the, um, town attorney like send you an email about this or the town council an email about?
He's been involved in the.
Who?
The town attorney.
Yeah, I think the last.
The dialogue with.
With us as the county council about it.
Okay, but they did not during a meeting?
No, in public meetings, that's not, that's not the place it comes.
Okay, well, why hasn't that been to the last couple of town council meetings and I? I have heard you say, yeah, well, they're, you know, they're not done and their schedule is probably December sometime or something like that, you just kind of. Waited it off like they're not gonna do it.
I didn't wait anything for it.
Okay.
I, you can clarify, I think we've had a pretty open dialogue with Mr. Boling and.
Yeah.
I just don't remember Mr. Boling talking during any of the meetings recently, so.
So.
I'm just wondering when this kind of stuff gets discussed, obviously, I don't. Know all the ins and outs in town council, but.
I'll, I can take a look at the agendas, because I think work session is normally where it's not. Uh, you wouldn't have a, if you're talking with the attorney, that would usually be like a report made in a public session meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
No, other way around.
It is the other.
Town attorney only attended.
Yeah.
I think it's fair.
Or coming on the, so.
I think, uh, in public meeting.
I think this was first discussed, town council wanting a timeline in September, because then we would have come back and discussed it in October as planning commission. Then we would have reported back, I think. I remember the timeline wasn't earlier.
You could, we, you could, Mr. Boling's comments have, they've been in the meetings, they've not been like outside, I mean, he might have said it in the council meeting, but I don't know.
And that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that this was being articulated in a way that we've been trying to tell you.
Sure.
To tell them, and I didn't get that from the regular meeting, but maybe it was discussed in the work session, I'll have to look that up. Um, also, these other things that we talked about. In this, are you saying that all of this was talked about? In the meeting or in the work session?
The things that I reported on, uh, think back to last month.
I'm just asking the hard questions because I don't feel like.
We talked.
It was very transparent, so.
We talked about it for like probably ten minutes.
I felt like it was very transparent, I, I don't, I don't know what was, something that's like.
Well, I mean, I think I've had a difference of opinion with you before about what should be related to town council, I think we're really. Clear about some of the things that we were concerned about and I didn't hear that from you, but may, you know, we can take a look at the. At the meeting, um. I didn't get much out of it when you were talking to town council, so I was curious as to whether. You had relayed some of these concerns to them. So, I'll check the work session and if I have more questions, I'll pass.
That sounds like, that sounds like a good sign.
All right.
I just, I'm not good at answering. But typically, are you, were you wanting debate or?
Well, I mean, this section talks about relevant actions and what we discussed with. Dan about our concerns, um. I ended up, like I hadn't planned on talking about being talked to outside. But it became more of an issue and I just thought it was worth saying, could everyone just, you know.
The main, the, the only one thing I will say in your defense was the mayor specifically, I mean, the mayor himself specifically addressed the concern and he. He was rather upset about on your behalf about what happened, who spoke about it in the town meeting.
Well, that's all I wanted to know is that these concerns were, you know, considered, um, you know.
But you, but he, I mean, that was openly in the meeting, you heard it, you were there, so, I mean, he openly talked about it.
He quoted like the importance of decorum amongst, uh, elected officials and appointees, just for. Uh, to the point for the continuance and value of your volunteer time, so I think he pulled a passage from, uh, there's a, Jimas Bulley, uh, that I've. Pulled a passage about, uh, generally that to kind of address that issue, um. It would be facetious to say that we can leave with the council members we wanted immediately or input while planning mission. Um, during it to not, um. We're still in the same boat where we have planning commissioners that would like to get the input right now and then we as responsible, responsible to the town council. Um, say, hey, we have a, we have a timeline, we even discussed last month that looks at us wrapping up through December. Um, you know, getting a portion out of it done October this month and then try to wrap up sometime in December and then we reiterated that. A, a recommendation coming out of planning commission to town council doesn't mean that that limits town council's ability. Uh, they actually don't have a timeframe that they need to, it's just when, once they start back and batting it back and forth between both bodies. Uh, so that's the other, um, and then there was kind of discussion about, uh, what would be a prudent time to get it back in. Uh, but, you know, same as we said here, we're working as fast as we can.
Sure, and now, um, and just the last thing, did we ever figure out what happened to our joint meeting that we had planned?
No, that's the one that did not come up last meeting, so the one thing I could point out is maybe we talk about it in, um, next Tuesday.
Okay, well, you've answered my question and, and the interest of moving the meeting along, leave that to you.
Okay, um, are any other relevant reports?
We, yeah, the other thing we dealt with was there was the B Z A. Position that ended up being spirited conversation, I might say, that there was somebody who was going to apply for it and then there was a little bit of.
What's the meeting?
Of the zoning against.
Oh, oh, okay.
And there were a few people.
They haven't been around, because we don't really have much of that.
It's, it's a rare experience, so there was then. Discovered there were other people that were interested in several, um, several, uh, town councils expressed some. Unhappiness about the process and so.
The process of.
The process of getting somebody, of, of getting somebody, so we have to put another person. On the board, so, because it was, and they have to actually go to the court to get this person. And so that was gonna be the process that was done and then in the process, it was discovered that, like, there were other people that were interested, so that got back, so where, where was that now? Basically it's back off.
Yeah, so, uh, essentially. The intention of having it completed in October got moved this month. So we'll probably re, re-discuss, uh. Everybody who's interested in the B Z A, two positions on the B Z A, five-member board with three members.
Hmm.
Um, and then town council will, town council essentially recommends, um, appointees that go to the circuit court. And the circuit court appoints these two members.
Um, quick question for my own interest, was there a? Anything posted about this? Because I don't remember hearing about it, but.
That was, that was, so the mayor had contacted, contacted somebody to say, hey, would you apply for it? That was Zach, who was a former town councillor.
Yeah.
And then there were other names that got involved and I think it was more of a kind of a question of the.
Stuart was on there for the other.
Yeah.
Stuart Munson was on for the other, I didn't realize.
Send me some info on that.
It's on the website.
It is on, on our website.
Okay.
So we shared it in work session a few months ago.
Okay.
Town council say, uh, maybe bring people who are interested in this B Z A board. Um, and then last month there was discussion about, uh, we should put up, we should post something downstairs and on the website, um. So we posted that last month, it's downstairs on the website. And then I'll probably, you know, neither here nor there recommend that that becomes part of a policy we're trying to develop.
Right.
Um, just so there's clarity.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, yeah.
Well, and it was interesting for me and I, and I would say for my part is that I didn't realize that, um, town council could just. Appoint whoever they wanted to, to the board and leave it at that.
Typically, what's happened in the. Most of the time we have to, we'll be finding people, so, and that's historically been a problem, and, but I think what was found in the situation was there was, there needed better procedure, but there was using anyone.
Such a length.
I mean, because if town council has that authority, just telling me that they have that authority, then. I don't have a question about it anymore, it's just really hard to get exact answers about questions, so.
The, the question being that can the town council just immediately appoint someone to, doesn't it yet?
Yeah, like can the mayor just, you know, ask some people because we don't have people, you know, beating down the door.
He could mention to them to go apply, but the town council isn't actually the ones that do.
Town council votes on a recommendation.
Okay.
So it's the circuit court.
From the court.
And then.
Um, because I was asking the same thing, I was like, I haven't even heard about this committee being packed in here in town. And then all of a sudden we're just adding some people that the mayor called up, so I'm just kind of thinking. You know, I know we don't have a lot of people who are volunteering to do these jobs, but it would be nice to know. You know, if that was an interest of mine, kind of like.
So I think in history I've seen is that to Dan's points, like we're usually. Kind of asking, what we did this time was usually what we do, you ask everybody on the board to just find somebody.
Right.
Um, and then we're having situations where we're actually finding people, so we're developing probably a standard, a policy that. Most other municipalities have, but they don't have the same issues or lack of volunteers.
Lack of interest, yeah.
Yeah, and again, they have to be inside city limits.
Which limits.
And, and I've been really, I've been really interested in the fact that there are quite a few who are running for these kinds of things, you know, and that's good. I like that.
Yeah.
By the way, I'm running for town council.
Yeah?
Oh, I'm a right, yeah, but that, that's, yeah.
Um, and then we also updated a resignation and appointment policy, so that's on the website, so, um. So that happened right after the B Z A.
Little did we know that would, that would all go to the media.
We should have switched the agenda items around.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it wasn't, it's, I mean, this is just town information that there's obviously the mayor's. Election for mayor, election for town council and meeting we have did earlier this evening is because. We had another vacancy of town council, so there'll be a temporary spot that's appointed. After this election and then that person, this person will be, will be at an election again a year from now because. It's expensive for the town to have a separate election, so we paired up with what's gonna happen next November, so. There's three vacancies, two immediate, one coming up on the town council.
Um, one.
There's two.
Vacancies and then.
Well, and, and then.
And reelection.
A, a spot, the, a spot that is open that will be an appointment, yeah.
Yeah, the election, uh. Board in, uh, Albemarle had told me that you don't have to vote for anyone, like you can vote. Three write-ins if you want to, or, you know, Alex and two write-ins is.
So for the technical, just to clarify, it is three council seats open on the election list and then we'll have a fourth coming.
Yes. Yeah, he's re-electing, uh, you know.
You said two, so I want to have some.
Right, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not picking a bump on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, any other relevant questions?
I'll stop.
Okay, all right, um, any matters to the public? Uh, what did you say? Other than that, should we go to that one?
Um. I don't think anyone's online or else.
Okay.
Yeah. We still have a live chat.
Okay, uh, moving on to no new business, there is no new business. So moving on to old business, which is our comprehensive plan updates from Lincoln.
Will you unmute and see if I got you coming through the right speaker?
Okay, I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, sorry, I have a lot of things on my screen open, in trouble finding my unmute button. Um, well, nice to see everyone, um. From last meeting, the, the main task was to compile everything into the updated comprehensive plan word document. So that's what I'm showing today and, uh, I'll, right after the meeting, I'll send you, uh, the link to the word document on our shared drive. Just so you can have it handy to look through, um, so most recently, uh, Lisa went into the document and I saw that she made some comments, for instance, on some wordings and so on and so forth. Um, and those all made sense to me, uh, terminology such as forestal versus forestry, um, and. Other things like that, so it's more wordsmithing, so I, I updated those accordingly throughout the document as she suggested, um.
Oh, hey, more like you got a question?
I'm sorry, Lincoln, to, to interrupt, I just wanted to know what you said, the two different terms?
Yeah, the, the two terms are forestal versus forestry. So, uh, I Googled forestal, that's, um. F O R E S T A L. And it seems to be, uh, uh, an older spelling of forestry. So, um, this is mentioned a lot in the comp plan where it talks about, you know, mainly the, the wooded landscape of the, the town, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want that means.
So forest tree is the, the latest term and that, that mainly means the management of, you know, large areas that have a lot of trees.
Yeah, okay, I got you, and I thought you said that I didn't know what the other term was, I guess.
Yeah, forestal, it was a little confusing for me too, um.
Okay.
So, what's interesting, uh, just to kind of elaborate, um, that forestal is actually in our, uh, zoning, um. Ordinance for the town. So, uh, and it's in the old comp plan, so, uh, I, I just come over here, if you can see my screen, I'll, I'll. I'll zoom in here, thi- this is the term right there.
Bigger is better, uh, something that's my project here.
I'll keep, I'll keep going, okay, so, so this, since this is the current zoning on the left-hand side. Um, I'm not changing the wording here, but on the right-hand side, I've, I've changed it to forestry.
Okay, maybe that's less S H R than forestal, is that what it is?
So I, I went into the, the zoning ordinance, uh, on the town's website earlier today. And, yeah, true enough, it's, it's actually spelled like this and, and remember the zoning ordinance from the town originally came from the county of Albemarle. Back in around nineteen ninety-four. Um, and who knows where they got it from, so it's just a historic term, yeah.
That being said, I just wanted to make sure.
Sure, um, so I'll just kind of explain why, why I zoomed in here, if you remember. In the twenty eighteen, uh, comp plan document. There's a recommendation that, uh, Lawless made to, to update some of the zoning ordinances, okay? So this was one, uh, recommendation to update the, the zoning ordinance for rural areas, okay? Um, and there's a few others that I'll, I'll give an overview, uh, in a few minutes, but just to, to share where, why and where that's there, okay? To share where, why and where that's there, okay?
Thank you for going through that. I appreciate it.
Sure. Um, okay, so I'll just start at the the front of the document, okay? And I know you can't see very much, but basically if you open up the the word doc. Later on the shared drive, you'll see in the navigation panel on the left. You can see the structure of the document, okay? So if you're not familiar with how to find that. So let's say I close that navigation panel, okay, it's closed. So you go under this, this little, um, you know, uh, magnifying glass. And you can go under find, okay? And then you can either search for words, like if you're interested in transportation plan, that's what I was, I was searching for a few minutes ago. Or you can go under headings here, so this is where all the structure of the document is is shown. And it really helps with navigation if you're wanting to go to a specific section, you just click on that section and you jump there immediately, okay? So, so to to start with the, 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 the document, okay, so, uh. This comp plan acknowledges all the previous comp plans that came before it. Starting with nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand two, so on and so forth. Because, uh, a lot of this text is is not, you know. Written now, it was written, uh, back then and we have amended it since, okay? Also acknowledgements, so, uh. I've, uh, for instance, added, um, you know, more recent planning commissioners like Mr. Peck. Uh, and but mentioned other planning commissioners that were involved in the process like, um. For instance, um. Uh, Matthew Johnson and Elizabeth Knotts, and then also a town council, Meredith Hines, okay? Together with previous, um, town staff that have been involved throughout, like Mr. Lawless, Rebecca Carter, so on and so forth, okay? And also I just added today, um, Max, Jack Maxwell, who has been helping us with the GIS maps. Javier, you might have the time to give an update on that too.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you think is appropriate?
Okay, so just to 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 mention, we we list everyone here and we try to be as inclusive as possible, um, with who is mentioned here. Um, so I've noted here where good places for images will go, okay, just to to let you know. Um, and here we start on the, the executive summary, okay? So this is really about two and a half pages that that give a overview of, of the town, okay? Um, so, so the most important thing here is, you know, we talk about the 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 population projection, okay? So this, this we projected up to twenty fifty, so I will, I will, uh. Update that. Okay. But generally, this is pretty much the same as it was previously, it's just, you know, touched up here and there in terms of wording, okay? And it gives a, an overview of the structure of the document, okay? Um, and then, uh, one addition here is the land acknowledgement, so. This land acknowledgement is, uh, you know, proposed by, um, previous planning commissioner, uh, Liz Knotts. So, uh, this was added, uh, just to really acknowledge the Monakin Tribe and, uh, the the Pohattan River, often known as the James River, so on and so forth, yeah. Um, so if, if anyone has any questions, comments, just let me know, okay? Uh, so this was suggested by Liz Knotts and, uh, my recommendation is that it's a positive suggestion, yeah. Okay, um, then we have the table of contents. Uh, the most important thing is right now, the the main, uh, document here is sixty-three pages. Uh, that is shorter than the previous twenty eighteen comp plan. This was one piece of information that people really wanted to know the length, right? So, um, right now, we're a little bit shorter. So I I think we'll end up. Pretty much right about there, sixty-three, maybe a few more pages, depending on how it all ends up, okay?
Is that including your appendix?
No, that does not include the appendix, so the appendix, um. Goes from. Page sixty-three or sixty-four. To the end of the zoning updates, which is eighty-five. So previously, the twenty eighteen comp plan only had, uh, one item in the appendix and it was the zoning. Updates, yeah. So what, what do we have now? Um, we have the summaries of all the community engagement events. So you, you might be able to see on the screen, we had, uh, eight summaries here. So, uh, you know, previously there was a concern that, oh, if you include all of this information in the front of the document. It's quite laborsome to, to work through, right? Um, so we still wanted to make everyone heard and include all of their comments, uh, whether or not we actually. Incorporated those into the recommendations of comp plan, but we wanna record them at least somewhere. So that's why these, uh, meetings are here. Then we also have the transportation plan. Um, this one I need to copy from the, the main document and put it here. And then the capital improvement program. Uh, this is that Excel chart that's kind of more horizontal landscape format. Um, so the recommendation of Mr. Bowling, the town attorney, was to, uh, include. The actual, uh, capital improvement program in appendix because it's gonna be updated ideally every year. In, uh, coordination with the town budget. Um, so there'll be a summary up in the main document of this, and then it refers to. The, the actual document here in appendix. So, uh, the last. Item here is the zoning updates, go ahead.
Um, sorry to interrupt, I, I just wanted to, in, in order to keep the meeting rolling along, um. For the purposes of this, this meeting, do you need us to go through the document, review it, send you any, um, changes? Um, edits, suggestions? What is the, what is the, what would you like us to walk away with? I, I don't, I don't think I want to send the entire meeting going through the document.
Sure, okay. Um, so the, the major, uh, update, uh, so far is, uh. The planning, history and data section has been completed, okay?
Okay.
This is very important because it includes a lot of. Historical information, but also information from the census and it's, it's, it's very, um. Data-heavy. So. The, the issue was, uh, this section used to be even longer in the previous comp plan. And, uh, we just weren't able to find this, this data. Um, that's current for, for Scottsville because Scottsville is a, uh, you know, straddling two counties. And B, a lot of the data is, is combined with Albemarle County or Fluvana County. So when you compare Scottsville with Fluvana or Scottsville with Albemarle, it's, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, right? Cause Albemarle has a huge, uh, rural area, but also has an urban area, right? So that's why I spent a lot of time, uh, sifting through the data and mentioning in as much detail as possible, but not, um. You know, laborsome, you know, amounts of detail that might mislead someone about comparing this with, with Charlottesville, for instance, yeah. Okay, so what I'll do, uh, in summary, the, the main takeaway here is I will email you this section in a word document. And I'd like to, everyone, if possible, to to provide feedback on the, the information. Or more information needs to be provided, yeah.
Are you looking for information or updates just on this particular section or on the entire document at this point?
Uh. My, my recommendation would be, uh, we focus on this specific section.
Okay.
The number of pages. Uh, for instance, we're talking from page eight to. Page eight to page twenty, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's that. Um, and if you have any other questions or if something's unclear, then, uh, you could just highlight that either in the document that I send you or. Uh, in an email. And then I can, I can check if we have more data on that or, uh, if it's just not possible. The, the important thing about this is, you know, this is the, the basis, the data that the entire comp plan is, is, uh, referring to. Um. And I'll just elaborate briefly, uh, for instance, the, uh, today I found out that the comp plan had some discrepancies in the area of the town. The total number of acres from, uh, before nineteen ninety-four to, uh. After nineteen ninety-four, you add them up, it didn't, didn't tally, so on and so forth, so thi- this is just a continued process of, of checking, checking, checking. Okay, um, so. I'll, I'll also, uh. Give a very brief overview of some of the, the more recent meetings we've had, uh, I've included that into the principles and goals section, okay? Okay, so what I will be working on next is really explaining these principles and goals, so. You can see on the screen is a simplified document or diagram of the, the weaving approach. And then here is the full document that we worked on last month, uh, with each item has two bullets, okay? So now I need to write a half-page on each one of these intersections, okay? So, um, in summary, I will send you a word doc with, with that section on the data of the comp plan. And then I'll send you the link, uh, for the overall document, so you can look through if you'd like, okay? Uh Javier, would you like to briefly mention about the maps?
Yeah, so I think. It would have been maybe following. Following our planning commission meeting, I started speaking with Jack Maxwell about the maps, um. Two real major maps that we need to include are the current, uh, zoning map. Uh, that will be presented in, in the comprehensive plan and then the second one is a future use map. So if you remember, uh, current zoning map mostly from the updates we provided are small corrections. Kind of along the lines of what Lincoln said, it's just check, correct and correct. So yeah, lines moving a little bit eastward or northbound or including, uh, for example, including, uh, the, uh. Fire station, which just wasn't on the old one. Um, and then the future use map, um, also we had discussions with planning commissions about, uh, direction with that, I think it might have. Think with Strassner, we even met, uh, did it. Two council members with us, um, so we'll work on that one first, but we first started with the, um. The current zoning map, cause you can build off of that and then do the future one, once you build that one. Um, he's using his ability with GIS, something that I do not have any ability to. Uh, we were left in a very tough position where we can't find between. The previous contractor and in our records, the original GIS file, so we have to kind of build it from scratch.
Well, and, um, I thought GIS wasn't exactly exact, is that correct?
Yeah, but we were, we expected that our, um, our zoning map, it kind of looks like we used a GIS map. And then start color coding it and then throwing it in and then doing the graphics on the top and the bottom, like that zoning map you see on our website or. Or the, uh, particle board I have, uh, in, in the office, for example. But we don't have anything that was, uh, the correct file for looking at this round. Yeah.
Well. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't talk to you all about that format, um. Jack left from vacation, but if you want me to take a look at it.
Yeah, so he's, he's like very close, he's just adding a few, the last layers that.
Yeah, so he's done.
But he's got all the zoning, uh, areas correct.
Alright.
I wanna stress, this is something I cannot do, if we couldn't, we'd have to probably contract out to somebody or some firm. Um, so he's doing this a massive favor, I, I can't really thank him enough and I've tried to. Support it anyway, but I mentioned, hey, do you think this is doable? And he said, yeah, I'd be very interested in doing it. So, um, again, like I have, I have, he has always, he's been very helpful to us.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying it again because that's probably all I can offer to them right now.
Right.
But I, but appreciation, so that, those two maps will be included, you'll see in the old comp plan, we got the same one. Uh, so I'll try to review with Lincoln what we see for the future use maps, the changes, I can't remember them off the top of our head, but. We spoke maybe a few months ago as planning commission about what we wanted there.
Yeah.
Uh, and then additionally, I'll share out, uh, tomorrow, uh, a, uh. A summary of our survey results, so. Um, I just writ- writing out into a little bit of a narrative, I think. I might, I haven't talked to Lincoln, but we might want to include that as the appendix. But just summarizing, um, that survey we did last year. Uh, pretty much taking the slides that were shown to town council, I think you, you weren't here yet, Josh?
Probably not.
Okay, um, we just had slides from the survey monkey, but putting it to narrative written down and kind of hitting the highlights. But I don't think there's much need to review, cause really it's just taking the graph in. Uh, transferring it, I don't think there's a lot of editorializing, I'll put it that way, writing through it, it's pretty.
It's probably a good idea that they were getting a few together, I guess it's possible that there could be.
Which we do to use own, yeah. So, um, I, I think those are the two updates, he's. I, I think with the progress and the collaboration, we should be able to probably just present those maps during the December meeting.
Yeah.
I don't, uh, how far he's gone on the current and then the small changes, the future. I, I can't see us getting hung up that much. Uh, at the very least, just the map itself, maybe we'll mess around with the graphics in the top and the legend later, but not a big deal.
I'll, I'll also give you an update, uh, about a conversation I had earlier today, um. About Scottsville Shopping Center. I got this flyer from Nancy Gill. Um, while back, uh, from the property manager called New Link Management Group, um. And the reason I highlight this is it's got some interesting, um, demographic information and I've written this into the overview document as, as a reference. Cause, uh, Scottsville, we've had, been having trouble, uh, quantifying how many people are served by. The, the rural region and come to Scottsville, so this is the only place I've been able to find that. Um, this management group thinks that the shopping center serves around twenty-five, twenty-six thousand people. And he should, he's sharing, uh, more information with me tomorrow. Um, and this is all proprietary information, I guess, from a company called Retail Stat. Um, and they, they use this to promote their, their shopping center and to businesses that could move in, of course, right? So, um, anyway, this is a positive piece of information, yeah.
So twenty-six thousand people per, yeah, year, month?
It's a, it's like a designated market area. So I think I'm trying to drill down into what. The, the details into that, into what they see as their market area.
Okay, so we don't know for sure.
Yeah.
So when, when I asked him on the phone today, he wasn't sure what the distance was, but he, he's gonna share the information. Um, I'm suspecting twenty-five thousand people might be, you know, fifteen, twenty miles, not quite to Charlottesville, of course, yeah.
I think it has to be closer than twenty, cause I think when we last talked, we did a range of ten miles and that was fifteen thousand.
Right, it's like how long a period of time and, you know. Yes, where are these people coming from, but also twenty-six thousand people. Individual, you know, right, I'm just not quite there yet.
So it's twenty-six thousand individual people and then around ten thousand households. So that's, um, I, I did the math, it's about two-point-five people per household, uh, so on and so forth, yeah. So anyway, when he sends the data, then I'll be able to drill down a few more details. And you're right, uh, Molly, you know, it's, it's all in the details, because if you, if you talk about. Households, you mix it up with people, then it gets very confusing and misleading, right, yeah?
There's some way that they're able to say that, but, and, yeah, I would love to drill down on that.
Okay, um, so, uh. I'll just mention, I'll be at, uh, in Scottsville on, um. The next meeting, uh, December second with you in person. Um, so I, I look forward to having a vast majority of the document ready and, and maybe even printed out.
Hey, Lincoln, did we say, do we need to go over pictures?
Uh, not yet, but glad to, um, I can email you after this and we can just, uh.
Okay.
Go back and forth on that.
Okay, and, um, I will be doing some more work in looking at which specific, uh, photos that. Might fit in what I'm reading about. Um, and kind of mark those off so we can discuss it.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Okay, um, yes, that's all for, for me, I'll just, uh. Listen in for the rest of the meeting, yeah.
Thank you so much. I didn't mean to cut you off earlier, it was just, it was hard to see the. Thank you so much. I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off earlier, it was just, it was hard to see the document up there on the screen and. I figured if if there was a section you wanted us to take a look at, we could do that, um.
Yeah. Well, I think the main takeaway is the the length of the document will will be uh hopefully no longer than the. Than the the old document, and I think that was a major uh goal of us in the beginning when we started, yeah. But there will be longer appendix documents, yeah.
Yeah, and we, you know, really very much appreciate all of your hard work on this, so thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, okay. So I guess uh we can move on to commercial zoning.
And we.
Anytime.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think just for a refresher to uh planning commission. Um, the Lisa uh town staff presented a little bit, asking a few of the questions, just kind of starting. The brainstorming, for lack of a better term, and then Lisa left with a uh request for planning commissioners to come back with some information, have a discussion with us, to you guys.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think that that's what I remember if I'm on track.
Yep, um I was trying to remember what it we, so each of us were supposed to come back with. Um, an idea to generate business in the commercial area. Um and I think we had, you had volunteered to um.
Are you worth though?
Kind of, okay, great.
So, one of the things that we kind of have an issue with is. How all of our things are volunteer based, everything we do is all volunteer, and so when we have events. All events are, for the most part, all volunteer when it comes to coordinated vendors. The ABC licensing, you know, that's done through their staff, but we've got to kind of. The head, uh well, before I go any further, she did say that, you know, you have to have somebody to like. Lead the, be the head person. By pitching these things, I'm not automatically volunteering myself or anything, right?
She just said that even earlier, just for self-preservation.
Just, yeah, okay, uh making sure there's nothing wrong. So, we.
Uh. I can't handle council. Get you right here, Tony. Yeah, let me know when you get to that point.
So the issues, we're always calling on volunteers and volunteers. They're they're not permanent, and you have staff who are not always permanent where they come and go, but volunteers will get tired and. We don't have the energy, and so we have lots of events that they come and they have like a really diverse, and then they're gone forever. Uh one of the ones I remember is, uh I was thirteen, this Friday's after five. We had music down, uh it was every Friday, uh it was great, and you had great turnouts, um.
That was right about the time when I moved to town, I was kind of dwindling. Dwindling thirteen? Oh, I'm sorry, did you say when you were thirteen?
Yeah, it was uh twenty.
Nice hair, nice hair.
Yes, exactly. It's not that long.
I'd I'd feel that awkwardly, but I'm being wrong with the full beard and, yeah, um, oh, I still.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I bet that one happens.
So we we went from having regular events that, you know, drove people in and. To now it's, we'll have a major event once every two to three months, maybe every six months. Uh off the top of our heads, we can say the Bateau Festival, Fourth of July. Uh our Christmas time.
holiday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Do you still have our pollinators week? But what do we have?
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Did you, uh did you all see the email from Stevie? She had sent an email talking about the things that scan is working.
Okay.
Um, and so a lot of that is kind of starting to trickle in, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. No, that's good. Um, so basically, the idea is to try to bring back some of these events, but. Not have them solely volunteer, so like we had originally talked about having another staff. Member onboard, whether part-time or full-time, to help. Solidify that, but having even just a part-timer that's solely dedicated to, okay, I'm gonna. Be able to set up the vendors for coming to a music event.
Yeah, yeah.
Then, you know. If they're coming out for food, you've got the bar that they can go to afterwards.
Yeah.
Uh or if it's, you know. You don't focus on food or any of the people there, they can then disperse and then get dinner afterwards, and so it just will help. You know, revenue for the businesses, and we've started getting very well with this year, but I mean. What it typically is, I was, I had some free time this past Friday, and it was like sevenish o'clock and, you know, it's. Black outside and there's no one outside on a Friday, which is just after Halloween, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's.
Probably blacked out.
In, yeah, um, in there, um.
Well, it, I'm saying you're there, I have started, I'm, I've mentioned this several times before, but.
Mm-hmm.
Working on getting a um contact list together or mailing list. Of people who want to know what's going on around town, but also having something that drowses their eye to. We need volunteers, we'd love to know if we can call on you or whatever, and have a listing of that as well.
Yeah.
And so um bringing that together, kind of trying to get people um. To show an interest in the volunteering, I mean, maybe a heartfelt. You know, we really need your help, we're all volunteer, we we need more.
Yeah.
Um and so, you know, maybe that will help. I'm gonna um use that list to send out a. Newsletter every month, and it may pick up to more than that, but for now, that's all I can commit to. So um but I think that that should have. You know, the the events that are coming, and then also to have information about maybe what town council is talking about, I think. That was discussed in a town council meeting, that maybe that was something that we could do, um. You know, in conjunction with that, that's not a business or a commercial zoning issue, but. It's um it's kind of the concept I'm going with. But then uh I got all enthusiastic in my interview with Nancy and was like. I totally wanted to advance, you know, and so um. I I would assume that if I were to meet the town council, that that would be something I contribute to.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's my story for right now, but just so you know.
That's also part of it, yeah.
Yeah, just trying to find out who out there might want to get involved. Because I think events would have a committee, you know, you can't do it by yourself. It used to, right? Yeah.
Then Laura.
Yeah, I started, that's how I started with town, was I didn't know anybody here, so I just started. You know, going to certain things, and I had worked with Laura for years, so. I was like, sure, you know, and when COVID hit, we all looked at each other and said, I'm out.
Yep.
Like, I'm gone, I can't do this, you know, and now we're getting our energy. This understandable that these things are happening, so I think it will. Work to have, I would go out and ask for any people, you know, or volunteers from. Yeah, so I think that if we.
So we can get.
Come halfway, maybe some of these people can say, hey, that was really great, we're getting together on this, you know, chance.
I I just wanted to do something like that, because I I thought it'd be perfect to have, like, Fridays after five.
Yeah.
Either bands or maybe like every other week could be or every month, or whatever, however often it would be, um.
And we. The movie thing is like so complicated, we keep like, I looked at.
Or maybe what you have to do, you know? Uh maybe it's your house, like we can have a movie.
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's not, that's not it.
It's getting right. Oh, right, no, it's like. If you can fans and then I was thinking like food trucks and things like that, but I don't know where, like, I wanted to do something with them.
Yeah.
I don't know how to contact food truck vendors, like, how do you?
Oh, wow.
But I've got somebody out there.
Yeah.
They, they smoke them.
It would be so great to have someone who was working on that. Oh, I haven't.
We have a list.
Brands.
Oh, really?
We have a list.
Okay.
From our events.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so I have the drawings that we put everything on, and it was like. This is who we had and things, this is how you contact that and all that, there's a ton of information in there. Do, I mean, it was kind of like Laura had put up everything so that in the future, it would be easier, so. I think that starting with that leader, who gets a committee, who. Plans the events in a way that is logical and sustainable, yeah, yeah, um, so.
It takes that spirit of one devotee, we, it's just what we talked about, it's. It's the one person that's devoted and it's like, this is my vision, this is my goal.
Yeah.
And just charge us forward.
I think it's just been hard before now, you know, like um I think Meredith tried to give of herself, she had. So many things on her plate that it was really overwhelming to have to deal with all of that, but um. Stan is really stuck up.
Yeah.
So I think you're right, I think um, you know, getting people interested in the town and getting businesses interested, it's just.
Yeah.
Businesses want people, and we're working on growing, uh you know, it's a couple of these things that. So, anyway.
Um, I also, did you um, I think you had also taken on the project of finding out. Um what shops were vacant, really on value take here?
So we did a, that was from our inventory, but I think we talked that there was, that somebody else had. A running list of them already, um.
It would be so great to have a shared uh space, I know we've got this drive that um.
Let me go back and.
Everyone on the.
It even, this, I I do remember us having that conversation, when I feel like we had said that somebody had. A list already going.
I think Nancy had was doing that.
Yeah, I know, yeah, she's, she's still working with it, she evidently has like this big huge map that's got. Very jealous, I would say, just feeling. But then the dog looked at me funny, and I was like, oh, yeah. Um, but yeah, so she's still very interested in doing all of that, I think, I think she's been busy with the. The election, but um, she is a great resource, I'm surprised at how many people do not. Listen to her podcast, it's kind of been hit or miss lately, um but. I don't know if she's interested in doing more often like she did before, but. That's a great source of information about what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, you know, she did podcasts about the wind farms down Buckingham and all of that, so, you know. Anyway, um.
Yeah, I think, I think have, it'll, it'll help when we have repetitive events that, you like, they're on a regular basis rather than like a. We go a few months without something or.
Yeah.
Um.
I think that's, it was like that, and I think we can put together a calendar that's um. You know, pieces to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I had looked up a, this is really boring, but um I looked up commercial zoning for parking. And apparently, it it's it's an incentive. To not mandate parking spaces, mandatory parking spaces for businesses in a downtown area, um and they looked, I I read some. Studies about um cities that had done this, um especially if. You, the businesses were located within like a block of a um. Like a metro station or something like that, obviously that doesn't apply in here, but it just got me thinking, because we do have conversations about, you know. Parking and whether to make it, you know. It mandatory for our businesses to have designated parking, um, and that.
How are we have uh designated?
Yeah.
Each business.
Yeah, or like mandating that they have a sort of a map of parks.
Yeah, but it's written into a lot of their.
We have current parking minimums.
Yeah.
In the zoning, but a lot of that is excluded in the downtown, just because of the reali- realism of.
Yeah.
What I mean, you 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 can't put a parking lot.
Right.
Down here, but.
Right.
You have some commercial, so.
Uh, I don't know, I disagree with that, we could dig a giant pole right out here.
In underground.
Just have a, yeah.
See, that sounds great.
I think, yeah.
At sea level.
With the water down there, yeah.
Actually, we could do it above and below, and then we can eliminate the mule stacks and just have a department garage. I guess that's all right.
Clearly, that's a parking garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only, uh, only about.
That's a terrible idea.
Yeah, those are all jokes.
Um, yeah, so I I know, like, we, what, if it's excluded in the downtown, we could. Have one buried, but.
There are so many um questions about. Um, and we just, we just don't have. You know, we have enough for what we're doing now, but for the future, do we have enough?
And and it's gotta be convenient parking too, because we do have the Alamooral County.
Right, yeah.
School lot that people can park at publicly, but it's uh so next to the, out of, outside of the Boys and Girls Hall.
Oh, right, right.
So you can park there, but it's not.
It's not that far.
But it's not an immediate.
Right.
Parking spot where it's like.
Plus, we, we do have um accessibility issues, you know, like.
But it's.
Eighty eight, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so.
I mean, if you, if you want to go to town, you park there a lot.
Yeah, but that's a kind of enjoy, yeah, it's, it's such an interesting issue in like, how you fix it, it's like, I have a good parking pool basis.
Giants right from.
You have to be able to make it companies that people will actually use, yeah, but.
I don't think so.
So now we'll just have somebody come in who is gonna bring a lot of business and stay to. You know, pay some land that we have over here. Especially now, but you know, like, we, we have to think of those things too, like. Work with that to, is that, it's a lot of content. I don't even know that we have that in the comp plan, I don't think anyone like that, we're working, uh.
Well, I, I don't think it's in the comp plan, I just think it would be like. Um, a zoning ordinance that we could update or to incentivize.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Business.
Yeah, um, I'm talking complete idle stuff, but.
Yeah.
You're saying that it was not effective when they designated certain parking.
It was, it was anti, I don't say anti-business, but it was anti, um, yeah, like.
It it was.
Anti-business when they didn't mandate.
Yeah, just to chime in if I can, uh from our community engagement events, we mainly heard that. Generally, usually there's enough parking, but the challenge is to find where the parking is, especially for visitors. So uh I think we heard better signage. Like for instance, it might not be found, more your park parking, for instance, yeah.
Are we gonna do something about that? Is that, would that be a town council?
I updated some parking signage.
Yeah.
So like the sign out here is new and the one down, um.
Do you think it's bad?
Don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, you know where.
I.
One thing, one thing I would add, the parking violation, which is. It is a. Problem that predated or back days, but the two things that have been done that I've. One I was a part of, one I was not a part of, one was, we added the parking that goes up to the bridge, so that was an addition. Of those spots that that were created. There's the outside of.
So.
Exactly. All of those, those spots were all created. The other one was when we. Worked on the Van Cleef Nature Area, if we had to actually, in communication with the Department of. Being with Fisheries and Department of Wildlife Resources, not us to add parking there. So we added an area, what used to be around the side of the one gate, and then the other one outside the current gate. Those were due, those were additions, and it's always been a possibility, we could do more back there. Those were new, those were additions, and it's always been a possibility, we could do more back there, I'm not a part of that at the moment, but. There's a there's a corridor there that goes along from where the gate is, all the way back to hardware. That's a fairly decent sized chunk of area that could be, again, that the one.
Sorry, where is that?
So so basically, when you go in the hardware street entrance of Van Cleve Nature Area. When you go in, there was a smaller area that we added, I think there's some rock there now.
Was it inside the park or?
Yeah, yeah, it was inside the park, we had the outdoors areas, and then the other one is outside the gate, that was created, that wasn't existed, so that's the new.
Okay.
It parks maybe five or six or seven cars off Fisherman's Park there or Hikers, and what I was saying is that that corridor. Is an area that could be increased, also part of the master plan we had was for more parking or. Any type of access in there, I mentioned it because it's actually. A key area that could help both the downtown and the other areas, the other thing about it is. When we talked about what we would do with the factory, the area over there also has a possibility of more parking coming on, but it is a real issue, but it's sort of issue of parking.
So that'll come when we have a festival that we have.
Yeah, I thought. We've been updating maps over the last year and so, for example, the map outside. Uh, got updated to include some parking signage, couldn't hurt, can't really focus, like unironically, I know where to park. And during the day, I I usually just walk to where I need to, um, another thing might be, you know, we have an updated parking map. That we updated in this whole process, maybe as 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 you start doing these events, that's shared out.
You know, you know how New York, sorry, we just started doing that, but I would say it's not a bad idea, be on the map, might might be like a brochure even or something, like. A very specific or something you can go to that actually says, here's the places you can park in downtown Scottsville, that would be very helpful in a bigger event.
Yeah.
So that people can realize there's these uh, all these different options.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the the tragic things in my area is that. We just don't have any place we can put parking for the Dutch Maytag entrance to the park.
Yeah.
And that's such a, you know, a formal entrance to the park and it would be great if we could.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't know who owns what or any of that kind of stuff, but. There could be, you know, a way, yeah, I just, I I really think we. Couldn't find a solution, but I don't know who owns property and.
Well, there's two two things, we actually own the property right behind Doug gave us, so there is some land there. And there's also some land across the street there that. We looked about maybe have spotted two there before a long time ago, this is long before you come here, you might not even know where I'm referring to, but. That area across from, so that if you go down on the entrance with Jefferson, when you cross the street off. Near the near. Near the stream, there's a place or two that could be, we we'd have to look at the map and see, but we had some consideration of that like ten years ago.
I think that's a a step in the right direction, um, you know, I've always. Thought of that, cause it's close to where I live and I'm like, I have no idea what the solution is to that, because back in the scan land. Or not the scan land, I'm sorry, the Van Cleve uh, opening from hardware, you know, there's. I guess some potential there, but it's it's kind of like parking the grass or whatever by the by the lake.
We had to win a court case to get it out, to have access to get through that area, that was the unfortunate thing.
Yeah. That's really hard, but we have, I mean, this is a natural resource that I think is such an an essential part of what. What we can advertise, that's a wonderful place to go, and it is, and we all know that, but it's hard to. Let people know how they can get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe that's just the end of it, but I think any creative thoughts about that would be. I think a good idea.
The funeral home, um, on days where they do not have the events, uh, maybe we could approach them to say. On days that you aren't planning events, would we be able to have people parking here for that and then we. Monitor the area to make sure the space clean and clear of dead vehicles, anything like that. Um, in exchange for the moneyless stuff to park there?
In exchange for, you know, slackness.
It's they, yeah, the the bare minimum of making sure that letting us do that doesn't.
No, no events.
And I've seen that with every funeral home, it's like they have so much parking because they need it once, you know.
So great while.
Um, yeah, it's not.
So yeah.
Right, but um, no, I hear you, it'd be, it could be something, but then I just envision somebody coming in parking and then there's an event.
And and that's why I say like, yeah, if there's that case where they do have an event and like they've parked it overnight, then we say, okay, we. Have the right to tow it out of there with them before the event.
Not towing it. Yeah.
The other thing I was gonna say is back when, it's been a few years, but I used to pretty actively do a lot of trail work and thankfully. It's pretty common, like I didn't park behind dogs, like, you know, in the evening hours and and.
Yeah.
There there are ways we could work out with businesses to see if if they're willing, they were very willing, I mean, they said they don't need it like to the town at the. At the time, but there are things like that that we can do pretty agile.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you can, with dogs, like park, you can park here after five.
Yeah.
Like a special time like that. Yeah.
That would be a great workaround, I think it sounds kind of confusing as far as how to articulate that, you know, brochure or whatever, but.
No. Not a problem.
I think that, I think it would be great to have some sort of understanding, especially for now, when I talk to people all the time in bait, it's okay. And uh, and so I talk to people all the time that are just passing through or wanting to, I talked to people today who were visiting town. Um, and they don't know that, and that's okay, they didn't look up, they didn't do their research beforehand. Um, but I think that people are not seeing the signs that we have, you know, to inquire about it, you know, or maybe.
Yeah, I really like that sign up at Esmond at their corner right there, like when you turn left off of twenty.
Uh huh.
By the the uh, the vet's office, it was just some like informal white signpost and it has like, you know, Nidri, Ben and Breakfast that way.
Oh. Yeah.
Plain Road that way, and it's clearly like.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody made this sign and it's, it just looks like.
It could be just as easy as that.
Right, um, it's a, and it's a really cute sign, it's just like, it's just a simple post with like different.
Um, we're going here.
Bees. Air bee.
I love it.
Well, yeah, I'm I'm bet sure they got the option for it.
But you know, it looks like, yeah, shaggy sheep or whatever, yeah, because it's like the old, um, I mean, I'm kind of moving somewhere, it's not, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think as long as it's not some old classic sign.
Like it's. Yeah. Yeah.
We would go for it, yeah.
Sure.
We do something like that, I mean, it could just have a boy scout paint on posts and stick a sign up.
Uh, since since the, does the town need to come to us for needing or for us to approve it, even though it's a town?
Yeah.
Do you wanna get some, you wanna pitch a idea to them for preliminary design and we can work on it with our news.
Yeah.
What what do you. Um. Maybe do it over email to get the details in.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
I don't see if you if you're able to snap a picture of this on, if that's a little bit fun, like.
Yeah.
Cause, cause what you have on it, cause for example, we'll we'll probably get in the next month a Van Cleve sign installed downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went through the process with the, there's an entity outside of VDOT that essentially does those VDOT signs.
Yeah.
So that got worked on from last fiscal year into this one, it just takes that long, so just exactly what you want on it is probably. Yeah, cause it's still not clear from the conversation exactly what you need, other than just a white post, so what 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 on it?
I think that'd be great, I'd love to work with you on that, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds so great.
I don't know where we would, like, the the one I'm thinking of in the Esmond or at the the crossroad there, it's like. There's only two ways you can play, like you can go down Plain Road or you can go down.
Right, right. But it could be at the at the point at which twenty goes up into hardware.
Yeah.
Um, and then we could even do two and have one down by Main Street to show, you know, what's back there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and um, the parking lot that's next to the Canal Basin, is that just public parking?
It's town property.
Cause I think that would be a great place to put a big P, you know, the blue P that says here's some parking. Um, because I never know, I obviously the pharmacy is not there anymore, but. I don't know who owns what, so it's great to hear that we can use that as well.
Is it split, so the parking, it's like the tavern, so parking next to the building is private property, parking lot?
And then the side tards, yeah.
Okay, so not on the left, but on the right, that's unfortunate.
The group space that we have farther back there.
Straight line, so you cut down and then that's the property line.
Oh, it's straight from like.
So half of that grass, it's the same as the parking lot is ours, half of it is uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
The new owner of the the property.
Hmm.
Somebody called the the factory.
Central Virginia Health Services owns the property, about a year ago, they were looking at probably uh.
Tobacco.
Including services in there.
Oh, okay.
But they said they were.
I know, you could say another tobacco. Yes, let's take a big.
There are, please, please don't in a public media, cause then it becomes like true.
Sorry.
But uh, they were looking at placing Central Virginia Health Services, they said they were pausing it about a few months ago.
Uh.
So I'm hoping that maybe a few months, maybe it's a year from now, we can reach out to them again, they were looking at bringing health services, but.
Okay.
So looping us back to the, when our idea was of parking.
Hmm.
Would we be able to pitch the business owner, like, hey, if we, you know. Found a grant that would allow us to develop part of that space back there into paved parking lot. Uh, and had a giant big old P for public parking, uh. Okay, maybe that's not the idea to pitch to them as well.
I was also thinking that space would be great for a dog park back there.
Oh, yeah, um.
I don't know, I was just trying, and and then I was thinking of services like dog parks and. A garden spot and stuff like that to groom people into town to boost the.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, but the and then I was trying to brainstorm where you would even put things like that, that is one of the places.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a really prime piece of real estate that has a big huge question mark on it.
Right.
Quite a few ideas of what to do with it, but these are all really great, I I don't know details about it, but I know that there are. That's a big place where we can really utilize.
Yeah, but it's not hours.
Oh, it half hours, yeah, that that's the that's the caveat, is it's like half of it's hours and, yeah.
Yeah. Who owns the the park that's fenced in that had that old chicken coop, or was it chicken coop back there?
I think that's.
I think that's the same parcel as the apartments.
Yeah, um, should be one of the first.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
These are all great ideas and I love that we're talking about moving forward with that, um, if anybody has any. Random lumber in your backyard, like I have some, so I'd use that for that project if that's what we decide.
For the sign project or?
Yeah.
Okay.
To uh, and I'll put, take my commissioner hat off and put the ARD hat on, so the.
Oh.
Plan of attack for you would be, uh, take a picture of that, uh, and if that's the design you're happy with.
Okay.
Send it to him, the town itself will put an application in.
Uh huh.
And then the ARB will review it for appropriateness, um, and then any.
Okay, I got you.
Cause we could do a logo too, that would have, you know, the more relevance.
Color. That'd be.
Placement.
And make it exactly how you'd like it and where you'd like it would be great.
Yeah.
Um, how your team provide me other details when it comes to that, be a CEO.
Okay.
I think the part, I think the idea that I had is all private property, so I don't know that would work per se, but they've gone. The owners would give us a little.
Yeah.
Coast.
Would, yeah, you can always talk to them and say, hey.
Yeah.
Hey.
Meanwhile.
Yeah, no, no, we don't do that, but.
Wonderful.
I think, you know, even like the base of the bridge, we could have like pointing to the farmer's market and hers park and Dorrer.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm I'm kind of feeling like that won't be the the solution to every area.
Sure, yeah.
Great to start with one and see how it goes.
Yeah.
That'd be pretty cool.
Okay, any other ideas? I mean, I I I really do wanna like have see some more service, like community service that is like a dog park or a community garden state, um.
I have, um, a friend of mine and I were talking about some of the things that were going on in the town, she'd asked me. Have you ever been to the Scrappy? I'm like, of course, you can just Scrappy out, then it's awesome in there, and she's like, I think you should.
Yeah.
Talk to the owners of that and ask if they want one in Scottsville.
Hmm.
And then just make it like a maker's space again, I really think that was an awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That um, Bob Abbott's place, and it was just conceived so well and interrupted by COVID.
Yeah.
Um, and so that didn't come to fruition, but that's not the idea, but I'm saying that. If we think about places in in Charlotte spell that we're interested in.
Yeah.
I mean, we could even ask the business or people that we know, anybody would be interested in, you know. Like proactively ask people to think, or if they have any sports, it doesn't have to just come from.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So if there are ideas of different businesses that might be interested in expanding or. You know, what things in town are like a franchise or something like that that we like, or whatever else, just thinking outside of the box. Are they, you know, I just want to be there.
I know, right.
Sure for me.
No, I mean, yes, but no.
We we could build it right at the edge of town, we'll, we can pitch it to Albemarle, we'll get it on the outside of the town.
Um.
Oh, yeah, what did the kids want?
On the other side.
Want Chick-fil-A.
No, it wasn't Chick-fil-A, it was um.
I'm kidding, but um.
They wanted also uh.
Crazy, crazy, was it really?
Oh, that one, Puerto Rico whenever they.
It was really.
Somebody's eating like shabba shabba or something like that, I feel like that was, okay.
Popeyes.
You know, Popeyes, five. The thing is, you go Chick-fil-A, you get breakfast, and you get much dinner, you know, all these other places don't do breakfast.
Yeah, McDonald's does, they do, yeah.
They do.
Nothing could be done.
I think so, okay, let's do it, all right, yeah, any other ideas for?
I have no ideas whatsoever.
Okay, all right, well.
I want to make lotion, um, to the German.
German.
Right, yeah, all the favor.
Hi. Hi.
Meeting adjourned.
I thought you're gonna bang down before we leave, it's like, yeah.
I know.
These kinds of things are amazing, the three of us can't get together on anything, but I I really think that, um. I'd like to work on this project with you guys, I would.
Well, maybe we are on council, where I'm going to, and I'm going to be, you know, I can um. In planning conditions only in the year, and I'm. Go in the year, when you're going to the year. Well, I'm too.
You guys got a disperse, you ended up moving.
Oh, yeah. Yes, no, you still got a meeting.
All right.
Thank you all, Steph, thank you all for moving.
Take care.
Thanks, have a good night.